Good afternoon, everybody. I want to welcome you to the Monday, April 22nd, 2013 Board of Supervisors meeting. We will begin with a flag salute led by, looks like me.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Holman, would you be kind enough to read the meeting per statement of meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Monday, April 22nd, 2013. Agendas are available on the table at the back of this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the public wish to address the board on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing then, we will start stalling for time.
Does anyone know any songs?
Oh, okay. Apparently, this item is not on the agenda. I was not under that understanding. I'm here to represent the Friends of the Kings Beach Library. We love our little library. We understand the difference between capital investment funds and personnel budgets, but we, the Friends, have given you $20,000 that we made at 25 and 50 cents apiece, you know, selling books, and we would sure like to see that library open more hours. At least, don't cut it. You know, maintain what we've got, but please, please, don't cut library services. Thank you.
And we need your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Carolyn Preitzer, and I live in Tahoe Vista.
We knew that. Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the time has now arrived. It is 2:15, and the board will hear our 2:15 timed item, the North Tahoe Business Association, regarding current status of the North Tahoe Business Association. Hello there.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Welcome to beautiful North Lake Tahoe. It's my privilege to be the first one to kick off this meeting and to welcome you Chairman Holmes and the rest of the board and to provide you with this update for the North Tahoe Business Association. I'm Joy Doyle. I'm the executive director of the organization, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you what we've been up to over the last year and a little bit about our strategic plan that the board adopted in January. First and foremost, we're happy to report that our membership is strong. We have 149 members compared to last, at the end of last year, we had 139, and currently we're at 153 members. So, membership is at the core of what we do, and we're pleased that we are growing strong. In March of last year, we simplified our member levels. We went from five levels to three, and we also strengthened each of our levels with lots and lots of benefits. In particular, we bumped up our premier level with a lot of valuable benefits, and as such, folks seem to be really enjoying that and joining at that premier level. And also, basic members from the past are now upgrading to the premier level. So, we're happy to report that of our total membership, almost 30% is joining or is at the premier level, as opposed to 18% about a year ago. In an effort to promote NTBA members in our district to visitors more effectively and to increase the value of our membership, we've been putting energy into our marketing initiatives. We launched a new website in February, and we created a new Facebook page called Tahoe Beta Bay, which we're using to communicate with visitors. So, now we're managing three Facebook pages, thanks to volunteers' efforts, and as a result, we've increased our likes by 39%. We've also increased the subscribers to our e-newsletter, which is important because we use that not only to communicate with our members, but also with visitors, and our subscriber base has increased by 35%. Last year, we started new quarterly small business seminars, and this is in thanks to a new corporate member of ours, Charter Business. We're doing these for free for members and non-members, and so far, we've had two of these seminars, and they've been very successful, in our opinion, even though they're small. The first one, we had 20 people come, and the second one, we had 40 people come. And not only are we offering our members with training, but we're engaging with our members, and we're using it as a prospecting tool, and also, it provides business-to-business networking, which is important to our members. Our shop local contest that we collaborate with all the area business associations and downtown associations, last year doubled in participation and spending with $192,000 of holiday shopping tracked through this promotion. And thanks to North Stars, Squaw, and the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association's involvement last year, we have quadrupled this program since 2011. NTBA is very, very busy all the time with events, and we love our events, and we are happy to report that last year they were highly successful. We increased our attendance significantly and also our net profits. And this is in strong support in terms of our sponsorships, which you can see up on the screen, and we are happy to report that these sponsors are coming on board, not only coming on board, but actually increasing, in some cases, for 2013. I'm just going to share with you a few slides from some recent events. This is from the Kings Beach Snow Fest Parade. Last month, in March, we had an estimated 1,000 people attend. And last year, at Community Cleanup Day in June, about 1,000 pounds of trash was picked up by our community members. And music on the beach, somebody said, "Oh, they didn't know that I was a singer," which definitely, I'm not a singer, but we have our free nine-week concert series in Kings Beach, and we estimated the attendance at 5,500, and we were very excited that we were able to double our net profits on this event. This is thanks to our sponsors this year. Where else can you paddleboard and watch fireworks on Lake Tahoe? Oh, my God. It's gotta be in Kings Beach on July 3rd, so we're hoping you guys can all join us there this year. We've got a lot of fun things in store. Last but not least, Passport to Dining, our food and beverage tasting event and fundraiser. We had an increase of 43% in our attendance, and again, we were able to double our net profits. So, because of all the success with our events and because we tightly manage our expenses, we ended the year on a profitable note. We aggressively leverage Placer County's investment to our organization, and we manage our budget tightly, and we also leverage volunteer hours effectively. As a matter of fact, last year, we logged 3,200 hours of volunteer support to our mission. And last but not least, successes for last year. In January 2013, property owners voted in favor to tax themselves to maintain the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project infrastructure. This is the first and only assessment district in the Tahoe Basin. This was a huge undertaking for NTBA and county staff, and many, many NTBA staff and volunteer hours were contributed. This is a great example of how NTBA and Placer County can accomplish things together. With utility relocations currently underway and the long-anticipated and much-needed Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project is finally becoming a reality, and we can't be more excited. In the fall, when we were developing our 2013 budget, it was time to take stock in the year and plan for the future. It made sense after one full year under my belt and with KBCCIP coming online, it was time to update the plan. In October 2012, our board, committee chairs, and staff participated in a six-hour professionally-facilitated board retreat and strategic planning session. Focus areas and initiatives were identified and aligned with committees, measurables and deliverables were established, and in January, the board adopted the plan, and it's providing us with structure and guiding us effectively. The first focus area of our strategic plan is business revitalization, and its main purpose is to plan and implement programs for business retention, expansion, and recruitment to build vitality. The first matter at hand when it comes to business revitalization is to work on a retention plan to get us through KBCCIP. We've reviewed the county's public relations scope of work for the project. NTBA wants to add to the scope with a few marketing initiatives to give people a reason to continue to patronize Kings Beach businesses during construction. We also would like to add a few low-cost marketing ideas that will provide the public with a vision for the future, which we believe will go a long way in offering short-term in offsetting short-term construction inconveniences. Additionally, NTBA would like to produce and distribute a business survival guide to educate and empower our business owners to be proactive and not to be victims of construction. NTBA has submitted a request for increased funding to Placer County staff to enhance and maximize the KBCCIP public relations efforts for the next two years. With a relatively small investment, we can add significant value and provide the county with a solid return on investment. The county's close collaboration with NTBA has never been more important. NTBA can help the county get the most bang for the PR and marketing buck by utilizing our board, staffs, and committees' marketing experience, collective intellect, and business Kudos to Placer County staff for responding to the feedback that was provided last April regarding the process for businesses and improvement projects in North Lake Tahoe. Steve Boulna's Alms Budsman's role is already making a big difference. We are excited about the county's economic development initiatives and want to collaborate with you on spurring investment and redevelopment. Now is the time to invest and redevelop while prices and interest rates are low and Kings Beach is under construction. We urge the county to offer financial incentives and to review the Kings Beach and Tahoe Vista strategic plan for business retention, attraction, and expansion that the Board of Supervisors approved in July 2002. Yep, it's still relevant, and NTBA is poised to help the county with these efforts. The second focus area, oops, I missed a slide there, that we're focusing on is community design, and its purpose is to provide input to design features and community character topics to improve attractiveness of our district. And public art is proven to generate positive economic impact, and the Design Committee has actually been working on a public art program for about a year, and we were excited and delighted when the keynote speaker of the Placer County Economic Development Summit last month was on this topic. The public art program is intended to encompass all of North Lake Tahoe, although it started in Kings Beach due to KBCCIP and the efficiencies with installing infrastructure to support art installations at the same time that the rest of the infrastructure was being installed. The North Tahoe Public Art Program will serve to diversify and stimulate our tourism economy year-round. Partnerships with the City of Reno, Nevada Museum of Art, the Black Rock Arts Foundation, and Placer Arts, to name a few, are positively propelling this program forward quickly, as well as a very motivated Design Committee that has made significant progress to date with plans for a pilot project on private property to test our processes in this next summer, and also, footings to support up to 11 art installations to be built during KBCCIP in 2014 and 2012. The third focus area is events, promotions, and marketing, and this is to attract visitors and locals to our district. A lot of what is surrounded in this focus area is our events. They're rather time-consuming. We have 18 annually, and new for this year, that includes our involvement with Ironman Lake Tahoe with the swim taking off in Kings Beach. We're signed up to be the team captain for two of their stations and looking forward to that exciting event. And we're also looking at a fairly significant redesign and enhancement of the activities that take place on July 3rd, leading up to the fireworks. We are extending the hours of that event from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m., and we're going to offer things like a DJ, live music, food, a beer garden, a dunk tank. Any of you are welcome to sit in it or throw, and lots of fun contests like a watermelon-eating contest, sandcastle-building contest, patriotic costume contest. It's going to be great, and so, we're hoping you can come on out and enjoy the community celebration. We have a newly resurrected Promotions and Marketing Committee, and they have some great ideas about new and digital and social media ways to market our district, to increase exposure for North Lake Tahoe and for our members, so stay tuned on that. And last but not least, our fourth focus area is organizational capacity. If we don't focus on this, we won't be able to execute the rest of our work plan. Some of our key initiatives are defining and refining board, staff, committee, and volunteer roles, and we're working hard to increase membership and volunteer support of our organization. We will continue with our successful events and attempt to maximize profits through increased sponsorships, and we are seeking and obtaining new funding sources and revenues. At the cornerstone of everything we do, we are constantly building, nurturing, and leveraging our partnerships and relationships. Again, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with this update. On behalf of the North Tahoe Business Association Board of Directors, we appreciate greatly your support of our mission to improve the economic vitality and quality of life in North Lake Tahoe. And any questions?
Thank you.
When do the Friday night Music on the Beach events start?
July 5th.
July 5th.
It's always every Friday in July and August.
And I'm pretty much there every Friday in July and August. Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah, a quick question before you run away. When we were, when you were talking about the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project and the sustainability of the businesses through that period, you mentioned providing incentives to businesses. What kinds of things are you talking about?
I understand there used to be some facade improvement programs and grants that were available, things like looking at possibly waiving or reducing startup fees or costs for new businesses to get involved. Those types of things is what I've heard at the committee level.
Okay. Now, I'm sorry, is there somebody that wants to? Oh, okay, thank you.
Well, everybody will remember, back in the days of redevelopment, we did have a forgivable facade loan program such that you paid in the early years, and the debt service was waived in the later years, and we did several projects in Kings Beach and in Tahoe City. There is some program income out there still that we could look at those kinds of expenditures if the board thought that that was a good way to go, and it may have a nice tie-in to the Commercial Core Improvement Project. The timing may be good to take a look at that, and, you know, maybe some other opportunities there. The fees are probably a little more difficult, but could always be reviewed and considered and taken a look at.
Well, and perhaps, when you're considering the fee issue, rather than simply a deferral of fees, maybe setting it up for payment over time as opposed to, you know, just whatever we can do to reduce the barrier to entry is really kind of what I'm thinking.
Like some of our programs in the past where you didn't pay your fee until the building permit was pulled so that you got a grace period of however long.
Or if, or if we even look at, you know, essentially, the county extending credit, if you will, by virtue of whatever the fee burden is, just spreading it out over a period of time.
Over time.
Yeah.
For a startup business, that's particularly helpful, I think.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. And now, we'll move to the Tahoe City Downtown Association, Steve Hawk. Good afternoon.
Hi, folks. How are you? Welcome. It's always a kick to hear my sibling, Joy, present because our programs are so parallel and so complementary. We're sort of like flip sides of the same coin, in fact, same sides of the same coin. Even though our styles are frequently different, there's just so many similarities. It's a kick. So, let's see, where are we? How's that work? I guess we're going to do all this to a picture of the Board of Supervisors. I always wanted to do that. Should I just keep pushing buttons until something happens, or? Careful, I'll have to start telling jokes soon. It's not going to be pretty. Don't have it. It's okay if I give you a step. It's like a... And that's why you always put your presentation on a memory stick. Tell you what, the kickoff slide here is what I call my annual State of the Union for Tahoe City, and since it's boring bullets anyway, I'll just go ahead and speak to it, and we'll catch up pretty quickly. So, a few comments on how I personally and my board feel things are going for Tahoe City. As you know, we're incredibly seasonal in the way things go, subject to the whims of the weather and the economy. That said, we've actually had a remarkably good winter season following a pretty good summer season. It's almost counterintuitive because all the snow came just before the holidays, but in many ways, those of you who are from around here know that was absolutely dead on what we needed, and because that big snowpack froze so solid, even though we locals were yearning for powder, it was actually pretty good economically. Our visitors could get here, enjoy Tahoe, and spend money, so it's been remarkably good. Thank you, guys. See, we can catch up. Okay, forging ahead, like Joy, we're very much in the membership business. I'll talk about this on a specific slide. Our campaign is already going strong for the year. We're looking for significant growth, and I'll point out a few things from how things went last year. And again, the parallels are absolutely amazing between TCDA and NTBA on how we revised our membership programs and benefited significantly because of that. Our financials are strong, again, I'll drill in on that a little bit, but the seasonality is a bit of a finance guy drives me bananas. We starve in the first part of the year, and we thrive in the second part of the year, so I pinch pennies mercilessly every day and have to keep doing it, but it's, we're working to mitigate that. Volunteerism, participation, all running pretty strong, but it's always, always a challenge. As you probably know, there seems to be a cadre of people who always step up and help out and a lot of people who don't, and we have to get more and more people participating up here. Like NTBA, we're always looking to expand our statement of work and services with the county. David will be talking about that in a little bit more detail tomorrow. We think there's more that we can do. We're always looking for support in able to do that, but we have a lot to offer. So, that said, the outlook, we think, is now actually quite positive. We've had two good seasons economically here. If you might remember, when I presented last year, I could barely express cautious optimism. Now, I can express considerably less cautious optimism, but again, it'll have to be another good summer. We're off to a good summer season already. I wish the snow had lasted a little bit longer, but that's okay. We've garnered really strong support as an organizing and advocacy organization in Tahoe City. Again, we'll drill into that a little bit. One of the biggest things that happened was the Vision Options Program here, which let us put a big stake in the ground for how we see Tahoe City evolving over the coming decades, actually, and that's already serving us very well, both in work with TRPA and with the planning organizations at Placer, so we're very happy about all that. I'm not going to get too far ahead of myself, except talk a little bit. Where's Steve sitting? There he is, back there. I'm going to be his PR guy today and then talk about one other program we'd like to see going forward. Let me brag about my board just for a moment. We've retained really healthy membership on our board with some tremendous new blood. We've got three board members who just get me, three new board members who get me excited every day. Michael Geldman, you might know, publisher of The Sun and the Bonanza. Catherine Hill from The Weekly both stepped up, and there's a woman I bet you don't know, Kathy Nicholas, who's been a full-time resident up here for about seven years and started showing up for stuff last year and just had incredible brains, enthusiasm, and get-things-done perspective. So, after working with her for a number of months, we recruited her onto our board, our executive committee. She's now running our marketing committee, and drives me crazy because she has me doing stuff all day, all night, and working way too many hours, but it's really terrific having her there. Sandy Evans Hall remains ex officio on our board, so I'm really excited about what goes on with our board. Let me just click through this. It hasn't changed much from last year, but this is how I kind of view things around here. You know, my job is to help bake a bigger pie. You know, we're a nonprofit, of course, but we try to run it like a business around here, make sure we're not losing anybody's money and putting it to good use. So, all our work on sponsorships, grants, pouring beer, lots of beer as appropriate, and fundraisers is what we do around here. In terms of leverage, like Joy, we're always working to leverage the efforts of our board, our volunteers, our various committees that are performing well, and selected contractors here and there. And our outreach, of course, working our lists, like Joy, we also overhauled our website, our social media activities, et cetera, and those are coming up to speed just in time for our summer season and then use of all types of media. All of this, of course, is on the back of increasing membership, which is just incredibly important, but also the participation of that membership and then making sure we have propositions for everybody involved, which helped us a lot last year. Come on now, go forward. There we go, good. I don't have quite as fancy a chart as Joy, but actually remarkable parallels, again, between our numbers and what we achieved in membership last year. We went up about 5% on membership, which, to be super candid, I usually am, I wasn't happy enough at the growth in our membership, but the upside was the upgrade in our membership. Joy and I both restructured our memberships. We made ours even simpler than the NTBA's, and what that resulted in was a big opportunity for us to bring additional benefits to our members and get them to upgrade, essentially, from our so-called economy level to value level. What that enabled us to do was boost our membership revenues by 50% year over year. So, now with that in place and knowing that we are delivering that value proposition for our members, now we're going to be pressing even more strongly for growth in membership this year. And I've got pretty ambitious, well, I'm sandbagging a little bit on my number there, but I've actually got pretty ambitious goals for upgrading membership. We did increase our premier memberships, our folks at the top. Joy is very protective of her corporate members. I'm equally protective of my premier members. We're developing deeper relationships with basically the big companies, the big employers around here, and you can practically name them on your fingers, so we're working on that all the time. Of equal importance is building out a real database. You know, we tend to operate on shoestrings, and we've been operating off Excel spreadsheets and things like that, and we're building out a real member database, which will enable us to just be more effective in running campaigns out to our membership, so we're getting that up and running now. We are in the fun business up here at Tahoe, and we take it really seriously. We run more than 30 events annually. To your question, Supervisor Montgomery, the date is June 23rd. We'll be... 30 events annually. To your question, Supervisor Montgomery, the date is June 23rd. But it's preceded by an event that we don't directly sponsor but partner with, which is mumbo gumbo on the Tahoe Gal on the 16th. So the concerts on Commons Beach remain cornerstone events for us. We've got the best lineup ever this year. We're working hard on our various sponsorships in support of that. I won't go on down the list, but we're always looking for ways to prevent, prevent, that's a good slip, present the best possible lineup of events and make sure they're economically viable. We don't need to break a big profit on everything, but we try to make sure we at least break even on everything and invest more strongly in the things that really provide community benefit and/or make money. So we're doing that all the time. If you have any questions on any events here, other than the dates, I can certainly answer those for you. No, keep charging. Let me talk just for a moment about our revenues. I decided on advice from David Snyder not to give you the detailed spreadsheet behind this, but just to talk about things for a little bit. If you look at 2011 to 2012, we had about a 14% boost in our top line revenues, which was really terrific. And then if you look over on the right, that's obviously 2013 forecast. I am a really conservative budget guy, so I never look for, I always tend to budget flat and then try to exceed significantly on top of that. So that's why the right two bars look pretty similar. But buried between the 2011, 2012 numbers is, as I mentioned, a 50% increase in membership revenues, also significant increases in the money that we got out of events. But in there is an opportunity as well. Again, being very candid, I'm not satisfied at our level of sponsorship revenues around here. So we're going to be working ever harder on that. We've got a professional helping us out in that area. And I want to see those membership numbers go up significantly as well. So I hope to be in front of you next year showing a lot of growth that isn't currently reflected on the 2013 side. Expenses, we tend to budget flat, but we're also looking, in fact, to trim a number of expenses as well and open up good bottom line profitability for TCDA, which of course just gives us resources to plow back into future events and initiatives. Last year, I always try to ask for something appropriately. And last year, I had received a lot of early input from my community about what you always hear about red tape. Sometimes on the part of the TRPA side of things, sometimes on the part of Placer. And I was looking for that, that way to cut through the red tape. You guys were kind enough to give orders to David and his crew to do some research, to dig into that and see what Placer could do to make things easier for new business formation and development by existing businesses. So they did a good survey, ran a bunch of focus groups here in the area. And this message was coming through fairly loud and clear that you could name somebody to help literally cut through the red tape. The term ombudsman started popping up by itself. And in the meetings with David last summer, we said, "Look, this is just, this is a softball right over the plate. We can do this within existing headcount and start adding some value." So I think it was in the fall that Steve got named? Wave again, Steve. There he is. That Steve Biona got named to this additional position. Press release was a little lagging there, but his work was not lagging. So there's already been good work, good successes on some projects Steve's taking on. Want to see more of that happening in Tahoe City, so we'll start ringing his phone in that. And I just wanted to thank you for the support to help us dig through, find out what the needs really were, and then address them. So I'm really excited about the ombudsman position. It didn't cost a lot of money. People like it. It's actually helping. So that's, it's just one of those straightforward things, I think, is having a significant positive effect up here. Appreciate it. But there's opportunities ahead. By naming Paul Griffith recently to his position in business development and all the ongoing efforts of David Snyder, David Bosch, and crew, we think there's opportunities to accelerate some of our progress in Tahoe City. The Vision Options document that we've developed up here sets a frame for things we can do in the coming decades, but it's time to reduce that into some projects that we can get going on right now. A lot of them are real estate development oriented and more. If you know some of our properties around town, like a lot of our communities, it's a quirky batch of properties and a quirky batch of people up here. There's just no shortage at all. We do still suffer from chronic vacancies. There's a lot of reasons for that. Some of them are good reasons, some of them are terrible reasons. There's properties that are going through generational transformation, like the Hendrickson property. There's properties, beautiful ones, you look at right on the lake, like the old lake house property that has never been occupied since it was rebuilt. And you just shake your head and wonder what the heck is going on there and what can we do. So what I'd like to do, somewhat like last year, is ask you all to support a little bit of research. It's not going, this is not big research, it's small research, so that we can get together and identify a handful of possible project opportunities in Tahoe City. And some of the suspects are on here already. Pick one or two real juicy ones that could act as lighthouses for development and redevelopment in our community. Use up some of Paul Griffith's resources. He's back there taking notes right now. Just say thumbs up. It's all good. And get to work. If you've had conversations with some of the significant property or business owners around Tahoe City or just the community at large, you know we continue to have a lot of deficiencies in how things get done up here and some opportunities to work on just a handful of projects. So with that, I hope that I'll be up in front of you in just about one year's time, thanking you for supporting this small, I hope it's small, but significant effort and be able to name a couple of projects that we've actually started to turn the corner on, where we don't have to drive into Tahoe City and look at things like the Hendrickson property and say, "Why can't we do something about that?" We did this tremendous thing with the golf course this year. And of course, we're starting our next steps there now. We've got to pick up just a couple of other key projects and move them on ahead. Our advocacy and outreach continues. I won't go all the way on down the list, except to note that we've got a number of these in place right now. It's really terrific. We've got some kind of threatening challenges, like the Highway 89 realignment, that's picking up a little bit of steam. We're a little concerned about that, but we'll work on it. David and I were in the firehouse today. I know a few of you have been thinking a little bit about what we can do with the old firehouse, both in the intermediate term and the longer term. We want to get in front of that and make a few good things happen. It's an interesting, again, quirky property, but we can do something with it as soon as the fire department, is Mike Schwartz still here? Soon as those guys get those damn trucks out of there by the end of June, we're ready to move on in. So moving ahead, again, I won't read all of it to you, but we've got really good growth, healthy turnover where it makes sense on our board and other places. Things are really, are really coming back here now. I wasn't sure of it a year ago. I'm pretty sure of it now. And it's giving us an opportunity not only to keep working on the momentum, but start thinking longer term. Where can we make some selected, really sharp investments that will pay us off? Personally, I think we're, it feels like the 70s to me in the best possible way, that I think we're at the beginning of what's going to be a long period of growth. It's going to be bumpy as hell along the way. But I hope you'll give us your support and again, your participation. Look forward to meeting with David and crew tomorrow and talk about a few more of these specifics in greater detail. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. Great presentation, as always. One question about two separate events, your farm-to-table event and your wine walk event. Are we going to be able to assume that you're using Placer grown produce and Placer wines in that?
Yes. Well, let me talk about farm-to-table, because that's where it comes to a little sharper point. The answer is yes. And the reason I hesitate just so slightly is that we've become inadvertently a victim of our own success on farm-to-table, where that, Douglas Dale and crew helped put that together specifically to help us put some funds in place to make sure the farmer's market continued to thrive up here. Guess what? It's thriving. We're actually doing very well. So the chefs were like, "Well, we don't need to do that anymore." So now what's going to happen is the farm-to-table dinner is going to happen. I believe it will happen with the same use of locally grown products, locally produced products. But we're probably going to shift from sequestering funds specifically for the farmer's market to using them for other nonprofit purposes. So the chefs will get together and decide what the nonprofits should be in any particular year, and then we'll be going on ahead with that. The wine walk will be happening again. I think it's June 22nd, right?
Second.
Good. You know it better than me. So it'll be lots of fun. We contract execution of that event out, so we don't mandate where they get product from. But there is definitely a certain bias towards including locally grown wines. And what I can do is follow up and make sure that that's pushed a little bit harder. The business that is running the event is a Tahoe City business. These guys have their heart and soul here locally, so I don't think it'll be a big push.
Okay. And then last, it wasn't part of your discussion, but this is a way that Placer County can and is going to be helping the Downtown Association in the very near future. I've arranged that one of our code enforcement officers, your new president, I volunteered him.
I saw the email.
Excellent. And I'm trying to get someone from the Chamber of Commerce to go out and do a walkthrough of the Tahoe City area, just to remind people about the rules about signage. It's been a real thorn in the side for people, particularly businesses who have gone through the sign process and have been fully compliant. Makes them pretty cranky when they just see someone throw a sign out. So I think there's going to be some real opportunities to combine the, excuse me, the Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and county staff to really get the message out to people and explain that, you know, we want everybody to be successful, but if there's just this crazy plethora of signs, you don't see anything and you just drive past it all. So Michael Johnson has been really responsive to my request to get a code enforcement officer up here to spend a day and just do that walkthrough. So I'm hoping to have some time in my calendar, whatever that day is, to join for at least part of the day. But we did it two years ago, just over two years ago, and it was really, really helpful.
Great. Great. I appreciate it. I've been following the emails. As you know, Gary is a busy guy, asking for what he should be asking for. So I appreciate the support. Saw the email on that. Actually, I sort of deliberately left it off today's presentation, but it's on tomorrow, so we could probably strike it off tomorrow. Appreciate that. I know you don't have a ton of code enforcement guys available, so a little bit, I think, will go a long way. I don't think too many of these businesses are doing it with any sort of bad intent, if you will, but they see the other guy do it and then one goes out. So we need to just reverse that.
Absolutely.
It'll be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Actually, pardon me, for both you and Joy, as you're talking about membership and you're distinguishing between your membership levels, what is it that you're offering to your members? How are you selling those memberships and especially distinguishing those premier levels?
Yep. The big difference at the lower levels is offering these tangible benefits like dollars off or discounts on advertising, where for instance, because of the generosity of the Sierra Sun, we can go to our value members and essentially give them 50% off on their advertising. So the way that I thought about the value proposition is I want those benefits, the email benefits, the advertising benefits, to justify the check right there. And that's tended to be the case. And then additional softer benefits go on top of that, the networking benefits, other communications and participation. And people have tended to recognize that, get a set of base level benefits, and then more on top of that. The people who invest in the premier level are usually organizations that because of their passion or their financial capacity are willing, are simply willing to make a bigger investment. They'll see additional benefits in terms of how they're presented on our collateral, our website, social media, on the beach, et cetera. But the dollars incentive usually is secondary to their decision-making. But when significant organizations, like the bigger ski resorts, you know, like Dave's, just to name one, the guys who are just invested in the community in a bigger way, that's usually what drives the decisions for premier as opposed to ROI. But at the value level and the economy level, we can show really tangible benefits in addition to the community participation stuff. And I can go, I can give you a brochure or whatever that takes you on down.
No, that's, that's good, because you just, you reinforce the whole, where I was going in terms of the online opportunities, the web traffic and all the rest. I'd be really curious, since you, for your clientele, you've got obviously Highway 89 coming in and 267 for Joy's clientele. I'd be really curious to run a couple of pilots on a couple of targeted weekends where we use our lighted message boards and see what we could do about driving folks, driving traffic to your website by having your website up on those lighted message boards as folks are coming in saying, you know, if you want to know what's going on or for great discounts, just something, some quick message that has your website up there. See what we can do to increase driving traffic there, get folks signed up. See if we have an appreciable impact on driving that web traffic. I mean, anymore, you've got more than two people in the car and one person could be doing it while they're just sitting there. And just see what happens. See if we have a, any kind of a discernible spike in unique visitors. And then how does that translate in terms of click-through to other links that are, you know, for your larger members, your premier members and all the rest. And if we've got folks in their cars and we have the opportunity to grab their eyes for a moment, let's...
I think it's great, both web and Facebook, other social media. We can stick them both up there.
You need, it's easier, I think, if all you're doing is trying to drive them to one site and then from your website, they can go to Facebook and sign up and friend you and like you.
Yeah, we can do it. We've put a tremendous amount of energy into overhauling our website, so I'd love to drive more traffic. It's kind of a bipolar situation where, of course, we want to drive more digital media engagement if we possibly can. There are parts of our community that are kind of Luddite and want everything on paper and so forth. But I think it'd be amazing to do that and just measure the spikes, which of course, we can do pretty easily and see what happens.
And then what kind of retention you get from there, because you can obviously track that retention if folks sign up for newsletters and all those kinds of things.
Excellent. Great idea. Let's call Caltrans and see what we can do.
We have, we have our own sites.
Oh, do you? But the big ones on, from the south or from down 89 and out towards Alpine, I think are Caltrans, aren't they?
No, I'm just talking about the portable ones that you put right on the side of the road.
Oh, hell, let's go big.
Those are Caltrans. They're not really interested.
They don't play. See, I'm still learning a lot of stuff around here.
I was just saying, the portable ones you can park on the side of the road, just, you know.
All right, we'll haul them out.
In the interest of tourist information and making more information available to folks coming into town, just hit them with that.
All righty, let's do it. I'm there. Other questions or brilliant ideas?
Good, very good. Thank you, Steve.
Might have to buy you a beer for that one. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Both Steve and Joy spoke about the ombudsman program that the county has started. And I just wanted to take a few minutes and update the board on what a success this program has been. When David joined the county last year, as you know, several of his initiatives included economic development and community engagement. And the ombudsman program was ideal for achieving that here in the North Tahoe area. After hearing from Steve at last year's April board meeting, staff immediately got started to find out what outreach can we do to improve our communication with the community. And we did hold a series of stakeholder meetings. And the desire for some type of ombudsman, some type of mediator to help the small businesses through the process was identified. With David's encouragement, we appointed Steve Biona to that role. And it has been tremendously successful in helping people, the small business owners who may not know how to get through the governmental process as readily as the larger businesses are able to. And through that, we continue to improve not only the county's outreach in the area, but bringing more businesses into the area. The program has been so successful, its staff's intent to move this down into the Auburn area so that we have a similar level of outreach for the West County folks. But we wanted to start with a small confined area. It has worked out very, very well and look forward to expanding it further. Thanks.
Thanks for doing that.
All righty. We'll now move to the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation presentation on Community House Project in Kings Beach. Good afternoon.
Hi. Thanks for having us today.
Hello.
I'm Judy Bell, the program officer at the Tahoe Community Foundation.
Before you cut a sight, Teresa May Digan, who all of you know, I am certain. She's a board member at Community Foundation, and she kindly is going to help guide our PowerPoint today.
Vanoway.
Yes, she's going to Vanoway today. But undoubtedly have an opinion and some information at some point in time. Thank you so much for having us here today. And actually, I want to start before we even get into this project at all by just talking briefly about how important Placer County has been to this project from the get-go and all the way through. Before we even had the beginnings of a project, we had a team that went out and looked at some other kind of nonprofit centers around Northern California. Richard Connect from the county was part of that team, spent a day with us touring sites and helping us brainstorm what we want for our community. As we got further into things, Jennifer Montgomery's been there for us from the get-go with advice and support. Jennifer Merchant's been an invaluable asset. Maureen Bowman at, you know, Children's System of Care. Glenn Harrelson, who's your guys' rep up here, who's fantastic, to the whole building and planning departments, Michael Johnson. I mean, I made more friends in Placer County than I ever knew I would want to have throughout this process. But it's really been phenomenal, the buy-in and support at all levels from staff on up to the Board of Supervisors. And we wouldn't be here today without that. So I just want to start by acknowledging that. And the second thing I want to start with is really the heart of this project. We'll talk in a few minutes about buildings and capital campaigns and facts and figures and things like that. But... But the real reason we're doing this project is about people. I worked many years ago now for Tahoe Women's Services. I worked in the Kings Beach office for a few years. And as you know, when you work there, you're dealing with women who've experienced domestic violence or sexual assault. And people would walk in the door in a state of crisis, and we could help them with a certain amount of that crisis. We could help with a restraining order, a safe place to stay for a night, some counseling support. But then at the end of that time, there was always that moment when it's like, oh, yeah, and all the other stuff you have going on. Well, if you go down the street a couple blocks and across the way, you can get, you know, your healthcare needs met. You can go over that way. Project Mana's there once a week. You can get some food if you need it. Back in currently in Bay, there's some other services you might be eligible for. The person's glazed over by now and done and can't handle any more referrals and directions and other people they're going to need to tell their story to. And out of that experience of working there came this realization that, as human beings, we are complex. And it's pretty rare that we have one need and only one need. And generally speaking, by the time we hit a place of crisis, we have a lot of needs going on. If you're at a place where you have no more food in your house to feed your children, probably there's some underlying issues. Perhaps it's an employment problem. Maybe underneath that, there's a depression issue or a drug and alcohol problem or an abusive boyfriend or a kid who's having real struggles at school. And these things layer on each other. And our system typically has been designed to pick one thing. I have a specialty, you have a specialty, you have a specialty, and I'll address that one thing. It's like slapping a Band-Aid on the scraped knee, but ignoring the bleeding eye and not paying attention to the heart that's not working. And really, it's how do we heal people holistically so that they can get out of that crisis place and back to a place of stability and functioning, so that they're not in that deep end? Because you guys know better than anyone, once somebody's over that waterfall and down into the deep end, it's really expensive, time-consuming, and difficult to pull them back out. When you've lost your housing, when your kid's been pulled from the home, when you've ended up in a psychiatric institution, that's not what we want for human reasons as well as for economic reasons. So this project is really about that. How do we catch people earlier and more completely so that they can be stable and continue to function well in our community? So that's the why. I want to orient you geographically before we get going as well. This project is happening in Kings Beach. It's the corner of Bear and Trout Street. This is a picture of the property we purchased a year and a half ago now, a little more then. It was actually a couple of properties. It was a, the Lake Air Motel, so a very classic Kings Beach, 1950s cement block motel structure with eight little motel units. The most amazing retro neon sign ever, standing out front. And that had transitioned to sort of medium-term rental units essentially that were variously vacant and not vacant. And then there was a residential house on the property as well, and then an adjoining vacant lot that was essentially a storage space for construction equipment and construction supplies. We picked that property actually after a great deal of research. T-Mae and a few others, Roger Khan and Dave Ferrari, and a handful of Kings Beach leaders were convened by the Community Foundation. They spent months touring every possible piece of property in Kings Beach for rent, sale, renovation, empty lots, the whole nine yards, and landed at this property for a variety of reasons. Our number one priority was it had to be in a central walkable location. As you know, many folks in Kings Beach rely on their feet as their primary means of transportation. And so something that was in that grid, that was close to the Boys and Girls Club, the school, the county clinic, you know, all those kind of great resources was really imperative. But we also loved this property, and I hope at some point in time, all of you will get a chance to physically see it, because it had this just wonderful feel about it. The house in the motel made sort of this campisy feel. And the second I walked in there, I said, I can picture the, like, community celebration, that, you know, driveway's closed off, the band's playing, the food's out, kids are running around. It's just got a great feel to it. It feels like real Kings Beach, an old-time Kings Beach. And the facility that's going to end up there is going to be a welcoming space and embraced by the community. It's not going to be some sterile building that isn't comfortable for people to go into. And I've worked in those. I know what those look like and feel like. So we're really excited about the physical place. Who are we is the second important question. I mentioned, T-Mae and I are both from the Community Foundation. And we took leadership on this project despite the fact that it is reasonably far outside of our comfort zone, because there really was no other entity to take on a project of this scope and magnitude in Kings Beach. We are 15 years old as a foundation. We've grown tremendously. We have about $20 million in assets, and we've given away about $20 million in our 15 years, all of which we're extremely proud of. But the reality is, most of those assets are restricted. They're endowed, they're donor-advised funds. We don't have the money to do a project like this by ourselves. Secondly, we don't really have the expertise. To be honest, I'm a social worker. I am not a realtor, a architect, a TRPA consultant, nor a property manager, a construction manager, or any of the other things that we're currently doing. However, the need was so big and so great. One of the factors that got us to the table was the fact that these three core organizations that I'll talk about in a minute, all approached us and said, we're struggling to find office space in Kings Beach. There's very little appropriate space for the kind of work we want to do. There's lots of old motel buildings, funky little, small buildings, but the quantity of space that we need is hard to find. And stable rent is really hard to find. This was a few years back, and rents were really fluctuating. And we were running the risk of a lot of these agencies locating their primary offices either in Truckee or Incline and having an outstation in Kings Beach. And for us, that was unacceptable. Kings Beach remains the community with the highest need in our area, and not having these kinds of resources in place there wasn't okay. So basically, these core partners came together with us, the North Tahoe Family Resource Center, which is really family support services, Tahoe Safe Alliance, which is domestic violence and sexual assault, as well as a lot of prevention programming, which doesn't get enough airtime. But they see over 5,000 kids a year in our schools working on child abuse prevention, dating violence prevention, rape prevention, things like that. And then Project Mana, which is our hunger relief agency. And in a typical year, they see between 1,800 and 2,000 unduplicated families come in their doors. So some of those families come week after week. So between these agencies, they're seeing a lot of people. And the need is great, and they're the perfect partners. To us, they make up the core of a safety net. If you picture that, kind of what you want underneath people to make sure they can remain, you know, at a level of living that we all want to be okay with, these are the safety net services you need in place. The more important part of the project, though, isn't particularly just the building, although that's the really exciting part, because I work so much on these abstract things. And to work on something that's physical and tangible is pretty exciting. But really, the important part of the project is the design of the programming that's going to happen within that space. Back to my words at the beginning about complex people that we all are, services need to adapt to that reality. And we finally, here at Community House, have a model where we're going to do that. So it's not just that these three agencies and a number of other agencies are going to be located at the site, and I'll talk more about other agencies in a minute, but it's that they're going to be working together in a way that's not normal or not usual. So when you walk in the door, there's one set of paperwork, and that grants you access to all these agencies. You're not going to fill out 74 forms here and then walk over there and fill out 74 more forms. There's one database. So all those agencies can say, oh, Phoebe Bell, let me see what you have in here. Great. Looks like, are you still living at this address? And personal stuff, I have, you know, decision-making power over what gets shared and what doesn't get shared. But basic demographics can be found so that I'm not redoing the same thing over and over again. And ultimately, once people sign releases and say, yes, I want you guys to work together, it means that we can really track impact in a more meaningful way. So we can say, oh, people who come in and get support, get food, and a restraining order at the same time, do better, because we're dealing with all these issues at once, and they're moving towards stability quicker and health and well-being. So we're really excited about that. And then in addition, everybody's jointly trained in each other's services. So any family advocate can help you regardless of, you know, which agency is paying their paycheck. And that's kind of groundbreaking, to be honest. Sadly enough, it really is. And we are confident the impact is going to be much greater, that people that get that intensive level of services will really thrive much more quickly and for the long term. One of the things we found as we have been walking down the path of this project is that this really is innovative, and there's not many people doing it. I referenced an early trip we did looking at similar sites around Northern California. What we found is that people co-locate often. They stick a bunch of services at one site and then go about their normal business next door to each other. And that's about it. They're not working together at that deeper, more meaningful way. We connected up with something called the Tides Foundation in San Francisco, which runs a network of shared nonprofit spaces all around the country. And there's real movement towards this kind of shared space in general, because there's so many more efficiencies, you know, business efficiencies as well as program efficiencies. But even within that, there's not very many agents or sites like this that are taking the programming to this other level. So we're really excited about it. And we actually really are piloting this to some degree right now at the current office of the Kings Beach Family Resource Center, where the other folks have moved in as best they can and are already trying to work more holistically. And it's been exciting to see the results and the positive feedback from the community. So where are we heading? What is this place going to become? Here is a rendering of the beautiful site we will eventually have. And the exciting part for me, as somebody who couldn't look at the plans and see the vision, is that you go to the site now and you actually can see a building that really looks like this. It's going to be fantastic. So this is the old motel building. That'll be basically the services building. It's going to have a groovier name at some point, but we don't have it yet. And in there will be all our frontline staff, very open workspace to enhance that natural collaboration that's really at the core of working collaboration. And then a whole bunch of private counseling rooms where people can be pulled in for private conversations, where also we will be bringing in other agencies as partners, who may be there one day a week or half a day every other week or whatever it might be. And that's where, again, we hope to partner more with the county, as well as Sierra Mental Wellness for Counseling Services and Big Brothers Big Sisters and ARC and some other really important programs that'll be on-site part of the time. The other building at the site, the house, is also being remodeled. And one of the more exciting things about this project is that this will be a real community gathering space. There'll be a room called the Community Room that's a pretty good size, that's perfect for everything from committee meetings and board meetings to mommy and me classes and AA groups and teen tutoring sessions and anything else that might happen. And to me, that kind of community space is always critically needed in towns and creates that connecting space that we all need, that makes us feel like we're a part of a coherent community. One of the things that I think is also exciting is that Community House won't just be a place where you go for services. It takes a lot of guts to walk in the door of something that says, battered women, come here. It's a lot easier to walk in the door of someplace that says, Community House. And you might be coming in to get food, but you might be coming in for that SAT class your kid's taking. You might be coming in for mommy and me, or you might be coming in for a restraining order. Who knows? Nobody seeing you walk in the door knows. And that's a lot easier for people to step up to, I think. We're excited about that. Next. So what's the impact? What's the long-term expectation out of this project? First and foremost, as we've talked about, families are going to be stable and out of crisis. We don't mean that every family will be self-sufficient forever, because there are some families, given our seasonal economy and the low wage level they're working at, that may need food on a regular basis or seasonally, in the spring and fall, when they get laid off of their jobs. That's okay. If they know to get it before there's a hunger crisis, if they come, they get supportive services. There's other things wrapped around that, and on they go. But it's that they're stable and they're not hitting that crisis state where things are really not going well for them. I think it's important to point out, this is a site that's used by the workforce of our region. These services are what allow people to stay at these jobs for the long haul, despite that seasonality, despite injuries or, you know, sickness or different things that happen to people. This keeps our workforce stable because they have the support underneath them to remain in place and not move out of our community. We, there's economic benefits in the short term. We've been hiring all local folks to do work on the project, so just about everybody working there lives within eyesight of the site, it seems like. Our architect is at Catty Corner. Our contractor used to actually own the property and lives close by, on down the road. And it's pretty fun. Anytime I'm over there, somebody's walking by who offered up, oh, I did the traffic plan for free, and I live over there, I work over here. And it's, it just has a real community feel to it. We have, I don't know, probably 30 or so volunteers on various aspects of the project, all local leaders and just committed community members. It's been really fun to work on, to be honest. And then lastly, to us, this is a fifth and final piece of the revitalization of Kings Beach. As with many of you, I've watched Kings Beach for many, many, many years. And 15, 20 years ago, it was a pretty tough place. And there was people living at levels of poverty in that community that I don't think many of us found acceptable. And it is so exciting to see how far Kings Beach has come. We talk about, teammate calls it the high five, and the five key pieces that have happened in Kings Beach. Started with Kings Beach Elementary School, was a super tough school, people's last choice to go to. They refurnished it, refurbished it, and now it's a school of choice. People argue, you know, go through lotteries to get into that school. It's a really well-respected school. The Boys and Girls Club was built. What an incredible facility and the resources that's brought to Kings Beach. We had the domus housing come into the area, and suddenly, people are living in respectable housing that's really, you know, amazing to see. We have the Core Improvement Project about to happen and all the wonderful benefits that's going to have for the whole community, tourism, business community. And now we have Community House, the final piece of that, which is really that human services element that keeps the whole picture together. And it really ties in with the master plan for our region. And we're really, we're really excited to see this all come together for Kings Beach. And then lastly, again, it's about partnership, and that's the only way this has happened. This is about a $2.2 million project. TTCF, really TTCF board and staff have put in some amount of money for the project, but we are fundraising the rest of it through blood, sweat, tears and every other way. Placer County's been a significant partner there as well. We received a very sizable grant from you guys through the Mental Health Services Act funds. And we also received some money from First Five Placer County, both of which made a big difference. It's been pretty neat, though, to watch that be leveraged in so many other ways. So we have private foundations who stepped up, the Sage Cowal Foundation at the beginning, and a number of other small foundations, the Martis Fund more recently. And then that's met equally much by individual donors who have really stepped up to the plate from throughout the region, I have to say, not just Kings Beach, but Incline and Truckee and Tahoe City as well. So we are, I think we have about 650,000 left to go. We're on the homestretch. And there was a point where we kind of got over the hurdle, and I said, we're going to do this. But we're working hard to get this last chunk done, which of course leads to, what can you do? And this isn't really meant for you, but we can't give a public presentation without saying, anybody can donate. All you wonderful people in the audience.
You take track.
Exactly. But really, the most important thing is just, at this stage, getting the word out. The way a capital campaign works is you typically have a quiet phase where you're talking to, you know, individual donors who hopefully are at a pretty high level, and you do that pretty quietly and see what kind of support you can get. And we went through that and found some great support. And then you kind of head into a public phase where you're really trying to reach out to the community at large and say, jump in, we need you. So spreading the word is great at this point. Anything anyone can do to pass on this information, talk about the exciting project. We're happy to take anyone on a tour anytime. We have a wonderful process going through our committee of volunteers working on fundraising called Fireside Chats, where if you call us up and say, hey, I want to gather a few people at my house and you come talk about Community House, we'll come and do a little dog and pony show in 20 minutes. And people can hang out with you and drink a glass of wine or have tea or whatever they do. And it's a really wonderful way to sort of build momentum for the project. One specific piece coming up for us that is pretty important for us is we're going to be applying to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association to their capital improvements funds. And we have some real specific pieces about this project that we think are of tangible benefit to them, aside from all the ways this supports sort of the soft infrastructure of the tourism economy that we have here. Specifically, we're building a lot, 14 parking spots at our new site. And those will be used heavily during the business day, but after hours, weekends, holidays, it'd be a great addition to the parking infrastructure of Kings Beach, especially with all the core improvement stuff happening. As well as, actually, those are our onsite spots. There's also some spots on our adjoining property, street side. And then in addition, we're in conversation now about TAUs that we have associated with the project and if there's any way to use those to benefit future development in Kings Beach, as we won't be needing them. So that's the last specific thing. But really, lastly, and again, as I started, I can't thank Placer County enough. We are incredibly fortunate for all the partnerships you guys have shown at so many levels and really appreciate the chance to update you on the project. And truly hope you're able to make it over there at some point and take a look around. You'll certainly all be getting invitations to the grand opening, which we hope is September 15th, or somewhere right around there. With that, any questions?
Phoebe and Teresa, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's worked on this project. I mean, you named me, but I have been such a miniscule part of this. This has really been driven by a couple of visionaries, and you two are two of those folks. I agree with you completely. I think this is the future model for how we provide services in public-private partnerships. I think the county really does have not just the funding that we've already put toward it, but we have other ways that we need to participate in this, whether it's Health and Human Services staff, whether it's our, you know, Kristen Mann, our Community Services Officer through PCSO. I think there's some real opportunities for Placer County to become much more involved in the community and much more involved in resolving these issues before they become just out of control. And this is just an incredible opportunity for us. So you've thanked us, I want to thank you.
Thank you. And yes, actually, to add to that, we've been so focused on the building that I'm just starting to move into the phase of like, all right, this actually may be built and opened, and then we have to run it. So how are we going to, you know, use all the space we have? And how do we build these partnerships? So how are we going to, you know, use all the space we have, and how do we build these partnerships, like with the county and Sierra Mental Wellness and others, where we want to find ways to bring people on-site? So that is what we're looking at next. So thanks.
Thank you. Great, great job. I'm looking forward to tour it. Anytime we can build comprehensive services in one facility helps our bottom line as well. So thank you for your enthusiastic participation and encouragement. Thanks. So now the board will adjourn until 5:00 PM. We will meet again at the reception hosted by the North Tahoe Public Utility District at Garwood's Grill and Pier at 5,000 North Lake Tahoe, North Lake Boulevard. And that concludes our meeting for today, right?
Yes, sir.